Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Happy Tuesday to you. Today is Tuesday, October the 26th. It is 10:00 a.m. We're located here at 901 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers for our board meeting this morning, and this is our official October Pinkout Day. See so many faces and staff with pink on, but Commissioner, I just can't go too deep into this agenda without recognizing the pink star of the show.
The star, right.
And that would be-
It's always one.
Director Dan Morgan. He's our Director of Emergency Management, and as soon as I came through the doors, I laid eyes on him. I thought it was a pink pooch from the pooch parade, but he's not a pooch at all.
You know, next year, you know, between, you know, he and Chief McDaniel have this one-up rivalry, so I can't wait to see what's gonna happen next year.
That's why I'm gonna turn the pink hat next year.
Probably be something much more creative.
Well, breast cancer is a big deal, and we know that, and that's one of the reasons that we highlight breast cancer awareness. As all of us know, the month of October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. We've had, we've had, and we have certain members of our organization, our staff, our leadership team, our workforce, who are survivors and some who are currently battling breast cancer as we speak. So we certainly do keep all of them in prayer, and not to mention the countless numbers of our residents and citizens here in Rockdale County who have been or are being impacted by breast cancer even as we speak. So it's a big deal. It's not a challenge or a struggle, should I say, that one individual commissioner deals with by themselves, but it impacts the entire family, what happens in the workplace. So we wanted to make sure that we highlight it. And also want to make mention to the Sheriff's Office and what they do every year this month, their patches on the side of their uniforms dedicated to recognize breast cancer awareness. They have the pink patch, and I think that's another, a great opportunity to show our support for breast cancer awareness.
The survivors, the sheriff's wife was a survivor, so I think that that's one of the reasons why it's so near and dear to his heart.
Absolutely.
He does everything that he can to support breast cancer and breast cancer awareness.
I'm so glad you pointed that out. You're absolutely right, Sheriff Leather's wife being a survivor, absolutely. Well, as we call this meeting to order, we want to start this morning with invocation from none other than our good friend Pastor Chris Shirts from Conyers First United Methodist Church, the church two doors down. Good morning, Pastor.
Good morning. Good morning. It's good to be with everybody, and yeah, glad that I could just walk down the road. At this time, if you'll join me, let's remember and lift up our prayer. God, you're the one who has created the whole universe, and for that we give thanks. You have made this beautiful world, this wonderful community, and for that we give you thanks. And Lord, as we seek you today, we just pray the blessing of your presence and wisdom and strength for this moment. God, we pray for wisdom of our minds, for eyes to see clearly the insight that needs to occur. Lord, for creativity in trying to solve problems. Lord, for collegiality and building of this community in ways that will continue to strengthen us as a team of citizens for your glory. Lord, we just pray for your presence and power to be at work in these your servant leaders. And Father, as has just been mentioned, we also remember today those that are struggling with cancer, especially breast cancer, those that have conquered it by your healing grace, those that are still in the midst of their battles. Lord, we just intercede for them this day and this month. And Lord, we give thanks for all these things, and we just trust your blessing to be with us. And so we pray that you'd be active in our community in these ways. And for those of us gathered here who follow you, Lord Jesus, we also pray that the honor and authority of your name will strengthen our prayers. Amen.
Amen. Let us stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you Pastor Shirts for that warm invocation this morning. I'm not going to prolong our agenda this morning. We're gonna jump right on into the special recognitions and presentations, and we will start with one of Rockdale's finest, who also is the lead top executive for ATL Transit and Link Authority, and that's none other than Mr. Chris Thomason, the Executive Director of the Atlanta Regional Transit Link Authority. Come on up, Mr. Thomason. Thank you so much.
And a proud Rockdale resident.
Yes, yes.
So thank you so much for this opportunity to come address the commission. Saved me a long drive into town, so I appreciate that. This morning, I actually wanted to take some time to talk to you a little bit about what's happening in the greater metro Atlanta area, what my three agencies are doing. And even though a lot of the projects I'm talking about aren't right here in our backyard, I think it's a precursor for some of the things and opportunities that will come out this way, and also I'll touch on some of the work that we're getting ready to embark on together with the county. So we'll go to the next slide. So Metro Atlanta is home to nine transit agencies that collectively were responsible for over 100 million trips in fiscal year 2020. In 2020, the ATL became the home of the state's express regional commuter operation, so it's moved from Greta to Serta, but now it's with the ATL. And that express service provided over 1.4 million trips in FY 2020, and many of those trips actually occurred on the Georgia Express lanes. You can see on the video on the northwest corridor, which is the express lanes out in the Cobb area, express routes experienced a 12% improvement in our on-time performance due to the speed and reliability advantages presented by those lanes. Also, in terms of our toll operation or Peach Pass, as you saw in the video, over 1 million vehicles now in the state of Georgia have a Peach Pass. They account for over 20 million express lane trips across the four different express lane facilities that we have in operations. The I-85 Express lanes, which is the oldest of those and just recently celebrated its 10-year history, accounts for the majority of our trips, the 8.4 million trips, but the northwest corridor is close behind with over 6.7 million trips. To put this in perspective, it took I-85 hot lanes three years to reach the same number of trips as the northwest corridor. But it's impressive as some of these numbers are, certainly, pardon the pun, COVID took a toll on our express lanes and our revenues.
We're not pardoning that. You're gonna have to pay the toll.
Yeah, so next slide. Let's talk a little bit about COVID's impact on what we're seeing in the region. You know, we started FY 20 with approximately 2 million trips per month, and we're on pace to hit approximately 25 million trips per year. Next slide. So yeah, we're at 2 million, and click it again so the graph starts. Started 2 million trips per month, on pace for 25 million trips for the year, and we start to see a huge decline in March of 2020. By mid-March, trips had declined by approximately 15% from pre-COVID levels, and as the public followed social distancing and shelter-in-place orders, a steady and steep decline continued, and we were down over 82% of traffic last year. And that, we hit the sort of the bottom of that trough of April of last year. At the end of fiscal 20, which for us ended in June of 2020, actual toll revenues were about $30 million, which, as high as that number is, was 29% below our original forecast. However, since April of 2020, we've seen a steady increase in trips since then, and during the first half of this fiscal year, excuse me, the last fiscal year, toll trips and revenues just continued to climb steadily. And now we're more or less back to normal, which is interesting because the workplace and commute patterns haven't returned to normal. I'm gonna talk a little bit about why that is. I mean, there's certainly people out there driving. I'll go ahead and give the teaser, but it has a lot to do with the fundamental shift in like commercial vehicles and freight traffic. But go to the next slide, you know, because we learned some important lessons during this time. You know, you don't have to be the head of the ATL to know that COVID had a significant impact on transit, so we talked about the toll side. Martyr Rail was down 60%, 70% during the pandemic, but local bus ridership actually stayed at about 50% to 55%, and it didn't matter if you're talking about Marty or Cobb Service or Gwinnett. So again, keep that in mind as we continue to work with the county and we start looking at potential transit needs, because what this really underscores is that even though transit was down overall, it was still a lifeline for many of those who are dependent on transit. And those are for workers in frontline sectors such as food service, retail, hospitality, first responders even. We had documented cases of healthcare workers up in the northern part of metro Atlanta who were relying on transit. It's not that they didn't have cars, it's not that they didn't have choices. They were literally so exhausted from the 24/7 processing of things, they didn't really want to be driving, and they were thinking about their safety and others. So if you go to the next slide, I want you to keep that in mind, because everyone tends to focus on transit-dependent, and a lot of times we start focusing on like we're doing somebody a favor by having transit. Know that many of us in this room are dependent on transit. These workers that, these are the workers that conducted your lab tests, stocked your groceries, provide services that we've relied on to really make it through the last two years. So this is something that we really need to look at, because transit is not only a lifeline service, but it's really helping keep our economy moving. All right, next slide. So we talked about that, but there was another shift, and that was traffic patterns. COVID didn't bring this about, it may have accelerated some of this, but what you see, and if you'll hit back on the slide for a second, you know these Amazon vans?
Mm-hmm.
I think I was out here like two or three years ago, and I was talking about how these electric scooters were popping up, seemingly overnight. Two years ago, you never saw these vans. Does anybody even go a day without seeing them now?
Right, everywhere.
Yeah, so this is fundamentally changed, and you can see it if you travel on the I-20 corridor between here and Atlanta. It used to be we had directional traffic. Now, you know, you have no idea if you're gonna be able to get into town or back. You can see bumper-to-bumper traffic at 2:00 in the afternoon.
Yes.
My associate and I were talking about it. She came in from the city out here, no problem, but the other side was totally backed up. It's because of the increase in commercial vehicle traffic, and it's something that GDOT and others are trying to study, because our traffic patterns have been fundamentally changed going forward. All right, so next slide. One more. So now let's start talking about the future of the region. This is the backdrop of everything that's been happening. The question is, what are the lessons learned that we can apply moving forward? Next slide. So here's what we know. To start dealing with our issues of urban congestion in this whole metro Atlanta area, no one solution's going to fix it. It's gonna take a combination of transit, it's gonna take a combination of ride shares, it's going to take coordination with freight and commercial traffic, and even our express lanes. Next slide. We're gonna start experimenting with new technologies such as BRT or Bus Rapid Transit. This is basically like a train on wheels. You're gonna get speed and reliability that can also share the lanes on these express lanes. By the way, there are no plans to do a toll lane out here now, but there are plans to do new express lanes on 20, heading out on, excuse me, from 285 heading out on 20 towards Stonecrest. So part of that in the future will also include express lanes, and we may be able to do some transit options on it. Next slide. And if you have a Peach Pass, if you don't have a Peach Pass, what are you waiting for? I know we don't really have that many lanes on the side, but we're expanding the use of it. Right now, we partner with Hartsfield-Jackson, and their new ATL West Parking Deck, you can, if you have a Peach Pass in your car, you literally can drive in, you don't pull a ticket, you take your trip, you come back, you just drive out, automatically bills. You're already running late, you don't have to pull out that credit card, you don't have to look for the ticket when you get back, et cetera. We are also in partnership with EZ Pass, that's the toll system that's predominant in northeast, and by next year, your Peach Pass will work in 17 states in the northeast and even in Canada. If you want to do a drive from Georgia to Canada, I sort of question what you're doing, but if you do, the Peach Pass will work. Today, as I'm speaking, your Peach Pass will work on any toll road in North Carolina and Florida. But next slide. We're receiving calls because of that 1 million people who have, vehicles that have Peach Passes, gas stations, car washes are saying, hey, can we somehow tap in so people can just drive through and go ahead and automatically bill if they so choose? So we're exploring some of those partnerships.
Wow, that's huge.
Yeah. I'm gonna just speed up a little, because I want to get to the Rockdale. So next slide, next slide. I've already talked on the importance of traffic. Some people sometimes ask, well, hey, how do you do the tolls and the transit, and isn't that pulling away from the tolls? We have so many drivers, we have so much traffic, there's room for everything. People can remotely work, et cetera. That last part of the slide, all we needed was 85% of the traffic to come back to have congestion. People forget how bad it was before COVID, so there's plenty of room for all these technologies. Move forward, next slide. One of the good news for where Rockdale is, is that you have the ability to sort of learn from other people's mistakes or experiments, but one of the things we're doing, there's gonna be more advanced technology, transit signal priority. We're working with certain counties now where, and DOT, they're putting technology into the traffic signals, so as the transit bus comes up, the light will either hold the green or turn to green faster. That's good, buses only run so often, but once these signals are upgraded, you can add the same technology into your police cars, fire engines, that again, give them the lights and ambulances. So multiple uses for this. Next slide. And we're experimenting with new technology for, in mobile apps for planning trips across the region. Let's get to the last slide. So this is everything we've been doing, yeah, right here. This is everything we've been doing to date, but we're very excited about our partnership with the county. We're looking forward to working with the county as you embark on your first major transit master plan. We have done similar work in partnerships with Henry County and Forsyth County, so we'll be bringing those lessons learned into this effort. As a resident of Rockdale, I think there's a lot of opportunities to explore ultimately what's best and what do the citizens want. We've really developed a grassroots or from the ground-up approach. You really don't want any of these transportation professionals, not me and others, telling you what we think is best. These plans work best when we seek out opportunities to get that feedback from folks, and so we're very interested in doing that. And the last thing I'll mention is, Rockdale's been a longtime partner. We have two express park and ride lots, and we've seen the ridership bounce back first in Rockdale County.
Good.
So we're averaging 246 passengers per day, which is nearly double where we were in January. So we appreciate both the business and being service to the county, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner?
I need to think about my question, so I'll call you personally.
Oh, yeah, please do.
Well, Chris, I want to just say thank you to you and your colleagues for coming out. It's always, first of all, we have a little bit of bragging here in Rockdale County that the head of ATL is a resident of Rockdale. You know firsthand, being a resident of Rockdale, all of the challenges that we have in our community. But it has been a pleasure working with members of your staff regarding the transit and mobility plan that we're looking at in Rockdale County, and as you stated, having that first-time master plan for transit is a huge thing. Myself and both of the commissioners share the high interest in having an intra-transit mobility for our residents, getting from the north side to the south side and vice versa, into some of the most central areas throughout Old Town Conyers and our shopping districts. So we're moving and working with your team to move in that direction, and it has been a plus. In fact, I think they're scheduled to come back to us with an overview presentation for the board as to where they are in terms of the timeline. I think that's gonna happen in November, next month, they're coming back out-
That's about right.
-to give a public presentation and somewhat of an update. But this is really good, and it's really good to hear, and I really appreciate you folks on the ATL and Rockdale partnership, because that's really key and critical for our local residents when we talk about commerce and economic development, and just simple ridership and mobility of getting people from one place to the other. What's also exciting to hear, what you made mention about the potential HOV lanes that are coming down to Stonecrest, because those of us, as you stated, who travel westbound at any given day, at any given time, you know, once upon a time, there was a time that you can predict when the traffic was gonna be heavy. Not anymore. Almost at any time you leave here, it's a big challenge. So it forces us to leave almost two hours early just to get to a meeting in downtown Atlanta for various reasons, whether we go into a show at the Fox Theater or something, arts entertainment or what have you. But thank you for coming, and thank you for this update, but more importantly, thank you all for the partnership that you have with Rockdale County. And the, you know, our residents are constantly wanting to know from a traffic, I don't think there's probably too many hotter conversations than transportation and traffic in metro Atlanta, and that definitely includes Rockdale County. So this is really good. Feel free to drop by, stop by anytime, and give us any information. Commissioner?
I do have one question. Are there any plans to have sort of like a short shuttle from the Stonecrest area to one of the, the train stations, the Martyr Train Station?
Yes, and there are no concrete plans, but overall, what, we have been doing some internal looks at what if we were to have some new type of service that ran from the park and rides and just into the nearest rail station. We've been looking a little bit at Indian Trail, but that sometimes takes people out of the way, so what would be more in the I-20 line? With the thought being, we could increase the number of trips and therefore, because right now, our service is 30 minutes somewhere to an hour. That means you gotta look at a schedule, as opposed to something that was every 10 minutes, you just show up. So we're looking at it internally right now.
But I also would like for people to look at the needs of seniors and those of us that are getting a little bit more towards senior status that-
I resemble that comment, yes.
That would like something that could take us into the city on the weekends, or maybe something a little bit that comes in and goes a little bit later so that we can take advantage of some of the things that are happening in the city on the weekends and on the, and in the evenings, so.
So to that point, and I don't want to get ahead of the actual study work and, you know, predetermined his destiny, but based on the work that we, similar work that we've done with Forsyth County and Henry County, the concept of flex transit, so it's like a shuttle bus, but then you use an app like Uber to schedule it-
Oh, wow.
-and it's, or on-demand transit is something that has come up in both of those studies in Forsyth County. So see, you should come work at the ATL.
Don't tempt me.
And I-
We have flying sauces by the time I'm finished.
I should have mentioned also, GDOT will be moving forward sometime next year, early next year, with a bid package to redo the I-20, 285 interchange. So we're talking, again, all the way in the city, but fixing that huge corkscrew that goes south and having traffic select much earlier on, whether you're going straight through or you're going 285 north or 285 south, which will help smooth out all that traffic at, around the Panola Road area.
Yes.
And of course, and I used to work at GDOT, and I have not been able to accelerate the project of exit 82, that interchange right here, I can't wait for that project to happen, so.
Yeah, that's one of our greatest prayers in Rockdale County, but we've got one just a little bit greater than that, and that is that we get our non-access bridge built before they do the work at 138 in the most congested intersection in Rockdale County. We don't know whether that's gonna, what's gonna come first. We've made a lot of traction and strides toward the non-access bridge becoming a reality. However, we don't know whether everything's gonna line up before GDOT does their project. We're praying that we can move forward, because if GDOT does their project, as congested as it is right now, it's gonna be even more congested when they start construction there at 138 Dogwood and Old Salem, so.
Well, I'm not GDOT, but I could spend a lot of time with them, I'm very familiar with the work around Courtesy Road, and I have no problem bothering Commissioner McMurray every time I see him. So if there's any little hints you need me to drop in his air at any time, let me know.
Well, we believe your influence does matter as a leader of ATL and a resident of Rockdale County, you know firsthand. Chris, can't thank you enough, can't thank both of you all enough for coming out this morning. Commissioner, any last thoughts for Mr. Thomason?
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
My pleasure.
All right. See you soon.
See you soon.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move forward at this point. Commissioner, we have the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from October 12, 2021, as well as October 19, 2021.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. No unfinished business today, is that correct?
That's correct.
And we're moving right on to the consent agenda. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions concerning the items on the consent agenda?
You didn't say anything.
I second it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. It has now been properly motioned and properly seconded.
We just missed Commissioner Williams this morning.
Right.
That's what it is. Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I feel the presence over here.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Excellent, thank you.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. We're now down to the regular agenda.
Yes, that was very quick. So item 561 is future land use case number 2021-04, an ordinance to amend the future land use category for Zero Salem Road Southeast from mixed-use employment center to medium-density residential to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt this ordinance as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and seconded. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Item 562 is rezoning case 2021-06, an ordinance to rezone Zero Salem Road Southeast from the NC MXDCID to the MRU to impose conditions upon the property to repeal conflicting ordinances and for other purposes. This is submitted for a second reading.
I move to approve the second reading and to adopt the ordinance as presented.
All right, I'm gonna call for the question- Uh, I, I'm gonna call for the question and ask that Director Johnson would come up and just bring a point of clarity as to which one this one is, is actually going to impact.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning. Thank you, Director.
Yes, sir. Um, this is actually in reference to five sixty-one. They actually, uh, this is the Salem Fairview Road where they're actually trying to rezone as well as get a future land use amendment, um, to do a mixed density of both town homes as well as single-family homes. Uh, this has kind of been going back and forth, uh, to, to the PC as well as the staff and a lot of iterations, but they kind of got it cleaned up. They've had a lot of coordination with GDOT. As you know, Salem Road, State Route one sixty-two, there was a forthcoming GDOT winding project. And so, they're trying to make sure this will be, um, timed, if you will, to coordinate with that. And so, um, but, yeah, they've had a lot of coordination with the staff. And so, uh, this is that particular project, again, at the corner of Fairview Road as well as Salem.
Thank you so much, Director. Thank you. It's been properly-
So, you have a motion? We need a second?
Second. I second the motion. Thank you, Director. It's been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item five sixty-seven, please.
Thank you. This is with Blue Alley Technology Solutions LLC. This is for Technology Services Department for the Zerto Enterprise Cloud Edition for the data protection disaster recovery in the amount of one hundred seventy thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and fifty cents, and it's for five years.
I move to approve the contract as presented.
I second that motion. It has been properly motioned and second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I will make a quick point that our Technology Services Department participated in the, uh, Fulton County, um, cybersecurity information hosted by Chairman, uh, Rob Pitts down in Fulton County just a few days ago. And we were well represented. Uh, in fact, I heard from other folks outside of the county, uh, that the knowledge base of our team, uh, was very strong and, uh, we had a very, uh, strong presence down there. So, hats off to Director Moore Jackson and her staff for representing Rockdale County. Uh, there is a major uptick in the conversations, Commissioner, centered around cybersecurity. As you know, we've been hacked twice, uh, ransomware. He, we've been hit here in Rockdale County and, and of course, of course, uh, several other counties across the region has also been impacted, um, by hackers or ransomware. So far, so good. We've not offered up any funds in that area. Um, but we're staying on top of beefing up what we need to do in the area. It, it, it's not never issue of if we're gonna get attacked again, but when and how many safeguards that we have in place to protect our documents, information, as well as our citizens', uh, uh, information that, uh, we have through our, um, systems here in Rockdale County. So, a lot more is going to be talked about as relate to cybersecurity and making sure that we have the right skillset, but also, Commissioner, the right talent in place, um, to lead us in the right direction to protect Rockdale County. You know, with us being such a small county, oftentimes, uh, we, we're easy to get looked over if we don't have representation in the right place. I'm really appreciative of Technology Services for being there on our behalf.
And in that vein, uh, a couple of things. Number one, um, I've been approached by other commissioners who wanted to get in touch with our Technology Services Department because they are, um, establishing a reputation for excellence. So, I just wanted to point that out. Several commissioners in the, um, Atlanta metro area have asked, and I tell them, I don't know, I need to come and sit in on that meeting with you all so that you all will say the right things.
Right, right. Cause we're not losing.
Right, exactly.
Me and you both were supposed to have that meeting.
Can't take anybody.
But, right. But secondly, secondly, I mean, I think it's very important that people understand that when we, um, first started in these positions, there was absolutely no money allocated for cybersecurity and technology services and things that we've done to put in place. So, as we are getting ready to go into budget season, um, and we're looking at ways, people often want to know how, you know, why do you, do we need an increase in our taxes for numerous things? This is one of the big reasons why we, um, we, or a, a big reason why there's an increase in, in our, um, needs because we are dealing with cybersecurity, technology services. Um, I remember the former clerk of court having a big problem with, with the jury, the jury selection because we didn't have adequate security or, um, adequate, um, things in place for technology for the jury pool. So, those are things that we have to look at that we might not necessarily talk about-
Right.
-on a regular basis. We just know that it needs to happen and we get it done. But understand that taxpayers still, um, that's part of what you pay for when you pay your taxes.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner. As the community, the county continues to grow, uh, needs and services continue to grow. Uh, the more schools they build, the more policemen, more firefighters we're gonna need, more improvements to our road, uh, the more bolstering up of our local library system that we're going to need. As the community grows, services, uh, become more on-demand. And we live in a world that people live life on-demand. They won't, they can touch an app and somebody almost, uh, appears. It reminds me of Star Trek and beaming up Scotty. It's just, that's where people are now. Uh, and they get a little upset when you can't deliver just that quick at the snap of a finger. So, you're absolutely right. Our goal is to be the best stewards of the taxpayers' money and to make sure that we educate and inform our citizenry as to why we're doing what we're doing. Because I, I do get it, you know, I, I, it, it's clear. People want to see where the money is going.
Right.
And it's our, part of our, uh, duty to make sure we explain that and put it on display. Uh, we, more citizens, you need another fire truck. More citizens, you need ten more police cars. It's just part of it. So, um, that's, you know, uh, at this point, I want to move now, Commissioner, to public comment and afford an opportunity.
So, I have not received any public comment cards. Did you have any?
All right.
Okay.
No public comment at this point. No one's coming forward, all right? Uh, we'll go back to board comment and, and, and wrap up there.
Um, of course, number one, um, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you for everybody that's come and participated. We have Ms. Geller out here who got, she understood the assignment, as the children say, and came in her pink. Thank you so much. And the, um, our clerk of court is out here, up here dressed in her pink. Also, she does so much for breast cancer, but all of the, um, staff look great in their, um, breast cancer awareness garment. Thank you so much, Director Holmes, for making sure that I was great this morning with my almost wardrobe malfunction. You took care of it. Um, but, yeah, but, all jokes aside, um, those of us who have people that have, um, fallen at the helm of breast cancer and those of us who love on the people who are breast cancer survivors, this is, uh, very serious. Um, get your mammograms. I think next year, I'm, I'm gonna do something a little different. I'll roll it out like in September, but I think I'm gonna do, uh, do, take the next, go to the next level on breast cancer awareness for next year.
Okay.
Um, then, of course, this is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And as I'm sitting here, I'm thinking we had a, a local attorney, um, this past week who, um, was running away from her boyfriend and he ended up shooting her and killing her at their apartment complex. And so, of course, the legal community in Atlanta, I'm tearing up, is, um, you know, it, it seems as if we can't say it enough, look for the warning signs, get out, uh, love yourself enough to leave. But whenever, um, domestic violence happens, it takes a toll on all of us. She had a child, um, and so now we, her family has to go on and clearly a domestic violence incident. So, um, we keeping that family uplifted in prayer. Domestic violence is real. Love yourself enough to leave. Any situation where you feel emotionally abused, physically, physically, definitely physically abused, financially abused, there's so much that goes into, um, the whole realm of domestic violence. So, um, you know, you could do bad by yourself and stay alive or unhurt doing it. Just don't need that extra side. Um, finally, on a good note, I had a ball, if nothing else, at our final summer concert series. I hope there were no pictures. Oh, well, I think we all had a good time.
Please don't do it.
I forgot where I was. But we had a good time. So many people, commissioners, are we gonna do, keep doing this? Um, well, hopefully the budget will allow for things like that. But, you know, like I said, we're going into budget season and we're having to make some very, very tough decisions based on the fact that we did take the rollback rate, um, this year. So, all of that goes over into next year and people have to understand that when we make a decision, um, it not only affects what happens in twenty-twenty-one, but it also affects what happens in twenty-twenty-two.
Absolutely.
So, we're going, um, we have to, people love those kinds of things, but I don't think people, when they enter the, into that park for free, don't realize that even though that's a free concert, it's not a free concert. We have to pay for the, we have fire and rescue running with their bikes and their uniforms. We have Parks and Rec doing an outstanding job with taking people up and down in those, um-
Golf carts.
Golf carts and coordinating the entire thing. You got to pay the, the, the talent who is absolutely fantastic. But even though it's a, a concert that's free to the public, it is not a free concert and we still have to pay for those things. And I think that we have to often remind people every day that, you know, these are services that you get because of, of the taxes you pay. And it's, it's, and, and when we go into budget season, we have to make the decisions of if, what are we going to trade off for a good time like we've had all summer?
Right.
But I think, I, I think Sunday was my favorite one. Um, uh, that being said, um, I think those are all the comments I have.
Well, I'm gonna pick up where you left off, Commissioner, and I have to agree with you that, uh, this entire summer concert series, um, from July all the way to October was just fantastic. And the first group I want to give a hat's off and a round of applause is to Parks and Recreation. Let's do that now. Our Parks and Recreation Department led the way with the support of fire and rescue, had the sheriff's office and many other, uh, components that make up Rockdale County government. But they were truly the star of the show, as I like to say, in terms of pulling this event off. The citizens were happy. They enjoyed the last Sunday of each month. You're talking about well-organized. We had a number of senior citizens to come out and the, I'm so proud of the decision to purchase those, uh, big golf carts that you could put, cause they were, there were senior citizens who needed that assistance. They could not walk from that parking lot down to the site. That was a big plus.
Especially after they finished doing the electric slide.
Especially after they, after doing the electric slide. But again, thanks to Parks and Recreation. And now I'm gonna really shift just a little bit to highlight one of Rockdale County's finest, Mr. Corey Brown, who is the head of our community improvement team. Uh, in addition to him being a Rockdale County employee, he has the Corey Brown TCB band who did an awesome job on Sunday. Let's give him a round of applause. I've never been so proud to call, um, a performer who happens to be an employee, an employee of Rockdale County. I'm telling you, Mr. Brown and his team, his band did a fantastic job. Uh, we broke a couple of rules by going thirty minutes over and the people were pleased with that. Uh, folks were out of their seats and, and really enjoying and having a great time. And Commissioner Washington is so right that, uh, several folks was asking, can we do it again next month? We had to explain to them, the budget is over for this year. We hope we'll be in a position next year to do it again. And then so many other ideas. Even Madam Clerk had a couple of ideas about what we can do next year. And I asked that she would send me an email. We're gonna talk about that at our executive leadership team and see how we can find a way to make these things. People like coming together. I think because of the pandemic, one of the reasons, just one of the reasons, people have been tired of being cooped up and sheltered in place. But this really gave them an outlet, uh, a part of this summer concert series. So, we look forward to seeing all of you all next year again as we, uh, hopefully the budget will allow for us to bring it back to the citizens of Rockdale County next year. Also want to, uh, say a big, uh, congratulations to all of the Rockin' Women of Rockdale County. Uh, on last Saturday, uh, we recognized ten women, uh, in Rockdale County, ten Rockdale County, uh, business owners slash residents were recipients of the Rockin' Women of Rockdale County. We had a, a slew of nominees. Only ten women this particular year were actual recipients, but to all of those, even those women who were nominated to, to, uh, as a Rockin' Woman here in Rockdale County, that's a big deal. We had a wonderful brunch. Our very own, uh, Executive Fire Chief, Chief McDaniel was the keynote speaker. She did a fantastic job. And we also had a charge to our women coming from Chief Matters and Judge Finger Ten. And we had also had music from Corey Brown and the TCB band. So, it was, and the, the local resident, let me just tell you, we really try to pride ourselves with using local talent. Um, um, the catering service, Gaslin Jones is a local resident. We've used her several times. Her food is always good. And she did a great job. That breakfast was fabulous. But making sure that we practice, Madam Clerk, what we preach by using local people in Rockdale County. Ms. Geller, putting that money back into the county. It was a plus. She's a woman. It was all fitting to have her out there. Uh, thanks to, um, our Pub Relations Department for both Rockin' Women as well as the Summer Concert Series. I tell people all the time, you want to know what's going on in Rockdale County? You go to our website. You go to our Twitter or Facebook or our Instagram. We have really given, uh, PR has taken on a, a B-12 shot in terms of making sure people know what's gonna, we, we've got PR on steroids now because people can't say, I can't find you. I don't know where you're looking, cause it's definitely out there. So, uh, thank you to all of those folks. As we hasten to a, a wrap-up for this year, I do want to, uh, remind folks of this, and I try to remember to do this every year. We're coming up to, uh, the time of the year that people need to be a little extra alert, okay? Uh, as we move through this week and young people and groups and churches and will be celebrating, um, Halloween and, and, and groups celebrating, uh, trick or trunk, trunk or treat or whatever they call it. Uh, I know the churches don't do Halloween, but they have some type of event, uh, kind of an Oktoberfest for a lot of the young people. We want to be, uh, uh, remind all of our parents and our citizens to be careful, be mindful. We're still in the midst of a pandemic. Let's not forget that. The pandemic is still happening. People are still being impacted by COVID. Uh, we have our final clergy call with all of our local clergy on the eighteenth of November that's coming up, where we've been in touch with all of our clergy all throughout the year, every quarter to let them know what's the status and what's happening here in Rockdale as relate to, to COVID nineteen. And I mentioned to Executive Director Holmes this morning about sending out a message through our Talent Management Department to all of our employees that, guess what? Believe it or not, we're still in a pandemic. So, you have to be mindful and do those things to safeguard and be, uh, caution, uh, against, um, um, the wrong type of interaction or activity. And let me just say this, uh, don't let your guard down. Uh, I heard someone last week say, well, even when the pandemic is over, whenever it's over, I'm still gonna keep six feet distance away from folks.
Where my man?
No, nobody wants you talking in their face like that ever again because you just don't know. Uh, so, so many great things have happened. We're coming up on the thirteenth, uh, turkey drive giveaway for our senior citizens. And let me slow it down again to say that there is a shortage of turkeys. Um, and I, I believe Commissioner Washington, if ever there was a year that the seniors needed this support, this year because so many people have suffered financially throughout this pandemic, we're asking anyone that hears this broadcast or watched this broadcast, please, ma'am, please, sir, if you can afford to pick up an extra turkey. The turkey is the most expensive part of most of those Thanksgiving meals. And I always have to point out, uh, there are senior citizens who are on a fixed income and a lot of them, for whatever reasons, they are stuck raising grandchildren. So, it makes a big difference on Thanksgiving Day at that dinner table, uh, for them to be able to afford a, the kind of meal that all of us have been blessed with. So, uh, we're already taking donations. The freezer is on the floor over at Courtesy Ford, sixteen thirty-six, uh, Dogwood Drive. You can take your turkey and drop it off over there. However many turkeys, you can rally up and finally ask that you donate them. And then on the fourteenth of November, Sunday the fourteenth, we're actually going to- we ask that you donate them. And then on the fourteenth of November, Sunday the fourteenth, we're actually going to give all of those turkeys out to those seniors who are in need. This is the thirteenth year we've done this. They're going to be out there in record number. We normally give out four hundred to six hundred turkeys every year. We need turkey. So make sure you hear me say this. This is almost a plea to you that we need your support and need your help. One of the safe things, we were able to do it with the Linda Hamm back in March. Seniors don't have to come into the building. They don't have to get out of the car. We've got a drive-through setup where they come, pop the trunk, replace the turkey in the trunk, or perhaps on the back seat. That's a whole lot better. And that way, no one is contaminated, will have you, and come in contact. And it's a really setup. I'm not sure that we're going to go back to the other one. I think the drive-through just works, just keeps it moving. And usually, in about an hour, four hundred turkeys have already been distributed. We do encourage our seniors to get there on time, on time, because we handed out all those turkeys last year. I think, well, it was early this year with Linda Hamm. We handed out all, I think, four hundred hams, Chief Cabe, and about four thirty. We did it in an hour, and about four thirty, people were still showing up. We were out of hams. So it is a first come, first served type event. Thank you to Chief Mac and the Fire Department. Continue to be our primary support along with Courtesy Ford with making sure that we have the freezers available to house those turkeys and that the Fire Department can transfer them from Courtesy Parkway over to the Olivia Haydale. It kind of goes back to something Commissioner Washington said. All this stuff just don't happen. There's a lot going on behind the scenes to make all these things happen. But my last plea is that if you're able to donate a turkey, and you can find it in, within your financial means to pick up an additional turkey, I'm telling you, there's ever been a year that will make a difference. And, and remember this, it's a blessing to be a blessing.
Right.
Okay? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Two things. Forgot to announce that we are doing our vaccination clinic with the incentive. The Board of Commissioners has decided to offer a fifty-dollar incentive for Rockdale County residents who are receiving their first shots. That initiative will take place on Saturday, November the sixth, from nine to five at the Health Department over next to JP Car, I think it's nine oh one Taylor Street or something similar. I know most people know where the Health Department is. You will have to have your ID to show that you are a Rockdale County resident in order to receive the fifty-dollar gift card giveaway, even though the, all of the organizations are not listed on this flyer. We do have several community organizations that wanted to help with this initiative, to volunteer, to make sure that they get the, the word out, to do the posting on social media. We really want to incentivize people, incentivize people to come out and get vaccinated. We are at a forty-four percent, was it fif, was that fifty-five percent vaccination rate? But that means forty-four percent of our residents are not vaccinated. So we want to get, we, we want to get, I want a hundred percent, but I'm an overachiever, so we, but November the sixth at, what was it, nine eighty-five Taylor Street, November the sixth from nine AM to, it says four PM. So we'll be there until five, but the last shot will be at four o'clock PM. Also, we are doing the second Tuesday of every month, the Small Business Initiative at the Reserve. We will, this, this month, we are collecting new and gently-used luggage for children that are in DFATs custody, because often they have to leave with their, when, put their things in trash bags. So I was thinking it would be nice to have a, a piece of luggage or duffel bag or something like that for these children. So if you come to the initiative, I meant to the mixer, then you can bring your duffel bag. Now Chair, I don't want you to bring me the luggage that you went to college with. That's not gently-used.
I didn't know I still had that.
I know you. That's not the gently-used we're referring to.
No, but, but, but I really like that initiative there, because when you talk about the young people that's part of the DFAT system or foster care having to move from place to place, and, and then placing their personal artifacts into a trash bag or Walmart bag, that's, it's embarrassing. It's not a good look. There's already a issue of stability and self-esteem going on. Last thing you need is to have your stuff all exposed or look like you, you in a mess when you are really going through some challenging times. So I, I think that's a great initiative, and I think the more you communicate that out to the public, people will, and this is the time of year that people really rally behind those types of initiatives to help out. That was a good one there, Commissioner.
And so if you are not going, cannot make it to the mixer, then you can drop it off at the Admin Building. I'm sure I can, I'll get it by then. But please, if you have new or gently-used luggage, then we can bring it for our children in DFATs custody. That is all I have.
Director, Executive Director Holmes, do you have any announcements from Talent Management or anything that you want to add regarding our Pink Out Day before we close out here? We want to make sure we don't overlook what we're doing here. Although we've talked about it, I just want to, it, it was initiated out of your department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Madam Commissioner, as well as Chairman. So yes, thank you. We did invite the entire county, all of Rockdale County employees, to join us today in our Pink Out Day. The Sheriff's Office, they have been wearing their pink badges. The Fire Department has different pink shirts as well. So we are excited that everybody participated, and just looking forward to a wonderful acknowledgement of how important today is. So thank you again for that opportunity.
Thank you, Director. Thank you so much. Director Mark Lewis, our Executive Director and CFO for Rockdale County. Director Lewis, is there anything that you'd like to say publicly coming out of the Finance Department before we wrap up this meeting this morning? The one thing about Rockdale County Directors, they're always ready.
The one thing I would like to say publicly, we have our new Deputy Director on board within Finance, Dorinda Barowage. He comes to us with a great deal of experience in public sector, directly coming from Macon Bibb County. He has his CPA and his MBA, but we are extremely excited to have him join our team here in Finance.
We're super excited.
Super excited.
Super excited. Let's show him and give him a round of applause. Welcome aboard. Yes, sir. Welcome aboard. Yes, sir. Would you, Mr. Deputy Director, would you like to have a couple of words to say this morning? It's up to you. All right.
I'm very excited to work with the Rockdale County. I came from Macon Bibb County and worked there for seventeen years, and my expertise and my experience certainly will help the Rockdale County.
Well, thank you for selecting and choosing Rockdale County as the place to work. I do want to let you know this, if no one has told you already, you've chosen the best county in the entire state. Yes, so give him a round of applause. Thank you. Look forward to working with you. And thank you, Director Lewis. Director Morgan, anything out of EMA that we need to be made aware of that you think that is pressing enough to take advantage of these few moments we have left in this meeting?
Just real quickly, I'd like to echo the Commissioner's comments on vaccination. She is absolutely correct. We have fifty-six percent who are fully vaccinated. That leaves forty-four percent that we still need to get and talk about to get rid of this pandemic. So get your vaccination. Anybody has any problems finding one, give me a call at EMA. We will find some, whether it's Walgreens or one of our clinics or G and R. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Director Morgan, before you leave, come on back up. I, 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 I had what is called an Oz mail. I had an Oz mail that hit me. And I, I just got a, a, a question for you, and I think the rest of the folks listening might have the same question. So give me, get this out. Bear with me, Commissioner. The question is, as much as we were highlighting breast cancer awareness, what brought it on to you to go ahead and change your hair to be a part of this whole awareness? Just, we want to hear straight. I don't want to ask anybody in your department. I don't want to call Susan and ask her. I want to ask you, can you share with us your thoughts, sir?
I may have read the memo a little too literally about being, about being pink out. I will say that I will let you know tomorrow, if this stuff doesn't wash out, what my commitment is going to be. Thank you.
Give him another round of applause. I will tell you, Director Gum is not the most enthusiastic director we have. Director Morgan is standing right next to him. So we certainly do appreciate you going the extra mile to celebrate breast cancer awareness. Director Relig, is there any need for executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. Happy Tuesday. Be careful as you move forward. This meeting is adjourned.